The zoning board of appeals for the city of Troy to order. And at this point in time, we are going to ask Mr. Evans to call the roll in a second. I'll just really quickly introduce everyone here at the head table for the public watching at home or that are here tonight. So from my left, your right is Mr. Lambert, and this is Mr. Sanzika. He is a planning commissioner in bed on this committee, so he serves on the planning commission and the ZBA. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman of this board. And to my right here is Mr. Neal, and then Mr. Desmond, and over on the side there is Mr. Evans, who is a zoning specialist with the city of Troy. He represents the city administration for our deliberations here tonight. And to his right is Ms. Dufresne, who is an assistant city attorney with the city of Troy, who serves as a legal advisor to this body. So at this point in time, I'd like to call on Mr. Evans to call the roll.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. McConne. Mr. Desmond.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher. Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
We do have quorum to operate here tonight as an official body. And at this point in time, we'll move on to item number two, which is approval of the minutes related to March 15th, 2016 meeting of this body. Are there any questions or comments to city staff regarding the minutes that were presented? Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes for the previous meeting.
Okay. There's a motion for approval, and Mr. Desmond, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I believe Mr. Evans were prepared to vote.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika. Mr. Clark.
Yes. So at this time, we talk about the agenda for the members present. Are there any questions, concerns, comments on the agenda as presented? I would just note, Mr. Evans made me aware when I was here early, and of course, you have a note on your desk that item number 4A has been pulled from the agenda. They requested, due to illness, to be rescheduled, so that one will no longer appear in our official business here tonight for your reference. Any other questions? So if none, if no other comments are offered, we then have our agenda set for tonight's meeting. Before we go on to the hearing of cases, I'm going to call on Mr. Lambert to read the rules and procedures for our board for the better understanding of the public. Could you please share that information, Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. Speakers should identify themselves with their name, address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, a next-door neighbor, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And Mr. Lambert, can you please be prepared to read public comment that was submitted to us in writing?
Sure.
Later, as we proceed through the agenda. Thank you very much. So at this point in time, we are going to proceed with item 4B, which is a variance request related to David Pardun, 1321 Boyd Street. And I'd just like to point out to the petitioner that since we are not a full board this evening, you have a right to ask for a postponement for a future meeting where perhaps there might be a full board of seven members. There's never a guarantee of that, but that is an option available to you for us to consider here tonight. So we'll get to that piece as the petitioner is called up to the podium a little bit later. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Mr. Evans to present the information of this request to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This first, this case tonight is a variance request for property at 1321 Boyd. The applicant is David J. Pardun. And in the agenda, it's in order, in order to split a parcel of land into two parcels, a 305-square-foot variance for the 7,500-square-foot minimum lot size. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the monitors in the room where I've prepared a brief summary. The first slide is a map of the neighborhood. At the bottom of the map is Big Beaver, and at the left of the map is Rochester. This property is located on Boyd Street, which is east of Rochester, north of Big Beaver. On this map, it's a red square circled. This is an aerial close-up of the neighborhood. The subject property, 1321 Boyd, is outlined in red. And as you can see, the existing land use in the area is predominantly single-family homes, with the exception of the property immediately north and west of the subject site, which is the Troy School District, Baker Middle School. This is the same map, and I've overlaid the zoning classification, "single-family residential", in yellow. And as we can see, the subject property and all the surrounding property in this area is zoned "single-family residential." Now, the applicant is proposing to split an existing parcel into two separate pieces of property. This is the existing property layout. And essentially, what he wants to do is bisect the property into equal halves, north and south. Now, the zoning ordinance requires that any newly-created parcels in this zoning district be a minimum of 7,500 square feet in area. Now, with his proposal, each lot will only be 7,194.5 square feet in area. So in order to have this split be approved by the city, he needs a variance for each parcel of 305 square feet, because he is deficient. Couple of points to mention on this. He has offered the condition that if he is granted a variance, he would offer to build a sidewalk on the school district property adjacent to and to the west of the subject property. And that's indicated on this overhead in orange, five-foot sidewalk. The applicant has also provided samples of the types and size of houses he would consider building on this property. And he's offering those conditions. And that's the existing house on the property now with the existing garage. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions of city staff related to this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lambert.
Two questions, one from Mr. Evans and one for Ms. Dufresne. First one, Mr. Evans, what would the side yard setback be for the one lot that would be to the east as far as their neighbor to their immediate east? Would that be affected by the lot split at all, or would they still need to comply with the side yard setback?
Oh, they would definitely meet, yes. They're well over. It's five and, a minimum of five and a total of 15 in this area. And it looks like right now, it's about, the existing setback to the east is over 25 feet.
And Ms. Dufresne, maybe you could explain to the board and for the people who are gathered here, the petitioner's willingness to put a sidewalk in there, how would the board, does the board have the ability to make that as a condition of a split?
Mr. Evans and I actually discussed that this afternoon, and I was prepared to remind the board that much like city council only speaks through its resolutions, the school district would only speak through its board. So the letter that's attached from Mr. Pardun's application, while it outlines the fact that it may be a commitment from the Troy, from the school board, you know, who knows what the school board would actually do ultimately? In terms of putting a condition on it, you could, you could do that, make it a condition that Mr. Pardun obtained that permission from the school district. But again, you know, just keep in mind that we don't have an actual board resolution from the Troy Board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good word, Ms. Dufresne, because that's absolutely my understanding of public bodies. So the resolution actually states with finality, essentially, that that is exactly what their perspective is. I found that letter interesting, it was enlightening, but at a certain point, that is a staff person, and that is not the governing body of that particular governmental unit. So having said that, are there any other questions at this time? If not, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and present your case to the board. Good evening. Please identify yourself.
I'm David Pardun. Yeah, you guys pretty much have everything in the package. This was in front of you last year. I spoke with some of the neighbors in the area, too, and there was a few of them that I brought, if you guys want a copy of each one.
Sure. Do you have one for everyone, or just one?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't share any information now until you're back at the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Richard Jawarski is here, too, to verify. He agrees on what we're doing. German at 1281 Boyd, I talked to him. He had no problem with it. He just wanted a smaller home put in. He didn't want one of the bigger homes that, you know, that are on the street right now that they built. Beth Martin across the street, she's directly across at 1320. I talked to her. She had no problem with two small ranches going in. And I spoke with one gentleman at 1320, 1322. He didn't give his name, but he, his issue was the school, the kids and that. So I spoke with the school board, or not school board, but the, I guess it was the president. I forget who it was.
Business staffer.
Well, business staffer, well, he was a, what's his name? But I spoke with him. They said there was no problem. I said I'd pay for a sidewalk to go in on the side, get the kids off the street, because that's an issue out there, that the kids are all over the streets, that we carry the sidewalk down the side lot where the approach is, where the people come in and out at. So like I said, it's, a lot of the people agree with me, and some of them don't. So I, you know, and the subdivision was planted in 1920, so there's a big issue on that subdivision anyway, so. So if you got any other questions?
Sure, thank you. Would a board member like to ask the applicant any questions or make any comments? Mr.? No? Okay. Mr. Lambert.
What would you state is the hardship that you're dealing with that would give the board some ability to rationalize approving the variance?
I think the lot's too big for the subdivision. I mean, it's just a big issue. I mean, there's an approach that's running through an actual lot now that's supposed to be a lot. So that kind of breaks in that you don't have your setbacks for the street. But we're proposing to pull the houses to the middle of the site to open up for traffic. I know a lot of people were complaining about coming down Boyd, going west, that, you know, they have cars coming out at them. But we're going to clean that whole corner up to open it up so everybody can see, and then be a sidewalk on there where the kids can walk and don't have to worry about going into the traffic. Because I know there's a lot of cars that come through there.
Thank you. I would just, really more of a comment, I mean, just based on your comment that you just shared with the board. So when you say that the practical difficulty or the hardship that runs with the land is that the lot is too big, it isn't, because you could build a house there. And we've talked with, you know, the neighbors came and gave their comments, and I'll remind people when we prepare to open up for public comment that we cannot take in comments about not wanting a bigger house. Whatever the city has zoned in that regard can be changed, and that would be a process through the city council, not this public body here. But having said that, you could build a house that is larger than most of those houses, I'm sure, on that street. I did drive, I did visit that property the last time, so I didn't come, go back, because the facts really aren't, there's much to say. But I know some people don't want a larger home, but I would say that that's not a hardship. You know, aesthetics are not a hardship. I want to build what I can make money out of, and I can build up to this size. If that's legally what is allowed by city council in this city, then if someone doesn't like that, that's just the way it is, unfortunately. But to say to this board that that's a hardship, and you want to break it up and then get other variance requests approved to get smaller homes for, to make some people happy, more, a pot of people happy that didn't like the bigger. I understand, being a businessman...
Well, I'm just trying to keep with the aesthetics of the subdivision, too.
Right.
I don't, you know, like I said, the subs have, you know, they have the smaller homes and, you know, so I'm just trying to keep with the aesthetics of it. You know, I, there's only a few, as a matter of fact, there's, you know, I pulled, there's 74 lots in that subdivision. Forty-nine of them are the non-conforming lots.
Okay.
And there's four double lots. And there's 21 conforming, actual conforming lots, which, I mean, it's over at 60, 66.5 percent are non-conforming.
Sure.
So half, and half of them are non-conforming, so I didn't, like I said, it was planted in 1920. It's, I mean, it is what it is, I guess, and...
Right.
And I know the rules changed and...
It's a little odd. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, so...
But I don't know that odd is a difficulty.
Well, that's okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. If you can have a seat, we appreciate that. Oh, yes, Mr. Lambert.
One more question, Mr. Pardun.
Oh, I'm sorry. Another one here.
The neighbor to the immediate right of your lot, 1333, it looks like you weren't able to receive a response from that neighbor as to whether they supported or opposed it?
Right, she was here last year.
Okay.
The neighbors brought her in, and I've talked to her a couple of times, and she seems to be all right with it. I mean, she doesn't, like I said, I don't see her here today, but I've spoke with all of them, you know, in that whole immediate area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Desmond?
I'm sorry.
As far as, was this initially two separate lots that were then joined at some point?
Well, I found out last, you know, last year when I came here, I found out at the meeting that, I guess it was.
Okay, and do you know at what point that occurred? By whom?
I don't know. I, he just said, they told me that it was split.
Mr. Evans?
Well, I don't know the exact date, but what I can tell you is that the house was built in 1946. That doesn't necessarily mean the garage was, but I can say that when this subdivision was planted in, I think it was 1924, they were two separate lots, lot 28 and 29. So there was some joining...
That was the original intention for the neighborhood, was to have them be separate?
Yeah, this whole subdivision is very consistent with lots of the size the applicant is, original lots.
Does that have any bearing now on it? Because there's a new requirement, does that have the previous plating have any bearing on now? You know, it's been adjusted for 7,500 square feet. Its initial intention, is that factor in whatsoever, or has that been superseded?
Not the way the zoning ordinance is written from an administrative standpoint. In other words, we were not able to grant him a lot split, because the zoning ordinance now requires 7,500 square feet. But that may be something that the individual board members or the board as a whole may decide to grant whatever weight to this request that you choose as appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
So this time, we're going to open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium and identify yourself. And I'm just going to remind the public that we're going to limit comments to the application about the lot split. We're not going to be talking about what could happen if the application would perhaps be denied, or another home being built there. That's not for our area of concern here. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Diane Schoenbeck. I live at 1393 Boyd. I've lived there for over 40 years. I've seen a lot of change on our street and a lot of change in our area, one being the school that's been changed. And there is now two schools, International Academy and the Baker Middle School. All fine, you know, it came, you know, where I didn't think it was going to come in my, to my backyard. It's, you know, a lot of noise and stuff, but, you know, I'm all for change. We've had a lot of bigger houses built in our neighborhood, different than what our houses are. That's all fine. My problem is, number one, I don't believe that most of the neighbors want this. I know a lot of our neighbors, and they're not real acclimated to two houses going in there. One, yes, two, no. As far as the sidewalk goes, there's, that road already is very small and cannot accommodate two cars. So to build a sidewalk right next to this road that already doesn't have enough room for two cars would be ludicrous. As far as the traffic direction, I drive out of my driveway every day to come to work, and that property line where the line goes down the road, now even with the house set to the side, you come down that street and those people do not stop, and you can't, they can't see us, we can't see them. I don't think another house there is going to cause an openness that they're going to be able to see. That's how I feel about that. There's been, like I said, a lot of changes. I've gone through a lot of stuff with things that went on in our neighborhood. I'm all good with that. But two houses on that partial, those two parcels of land are, to me, are just overbearing for that corner where we have two schools that people and kids walk back and forth at all times. And the traffic, it's not going to alleviate the traffic, and I don't believe that the neighbor, and the lady next door to him, to where this is going to be built, she's not acclimated to that at all. She's not happy about that at all. So that's what I have to say. I'm going to let Diane talk, because she, she has all the facts, okay? Thank you.
Next person.
Good evening. My name is Diana Lottie. I live at 1308 Boyd, which would be across, kitty-corner across the street from 1321 Boyd. I first wanted to question the sidewalk. It veers off at the end because of the creek back, the Boyd drain back there. Where it veers off, it veers off into the most narrow point of that driveway. The children would be thrown out right into the middle of that traffic there. Two cars can't cross there now, and if the children are out there, that would cause more of a problem. I would assume they can't put a sidewalk over the drain, and that's probably why it's showing that angle. But it puts it right into the middle of that narrow driveway. So they're still, the children still would be in the traffic there. I have a question. When we were here last year, because of that school driveway, the, if there was a house in the westerly lot, I seem to remember that that had to be, the driveway had to be three feet from the school driveway? I don't, I have it written from last year. Relative to the location of the driveway on the westerly lot, should a split be approved, the approach must be located as far to the east side of the lot as possible without encroaching on the property line extended. Drive needs to be a minimum of three feet from the property line, and drive approach radius must be located entirely within the applicant's right-of-way frontage. Which, to me, then brings to mind, when we were here last year, they were talking about sharing a driveway because of that, and I don't hear any mention of that today or any sample of houses with that one driveway. But that's a concern we have also. Keeping with the aesthetics of the neighborhood, tearing down one 1,309-square-foot house and putting up two 15- to 2,000-square-foot houses, to me, does change the neighborhood. You're going from 1,309 square feet to 3,000 to 4,000 square feet on the property if two houses were put there. And I think it's too much for that area, and I agree, it would block the view of that traffic coming in and out of that driveway and the people coming and going on Boyd. And as far as keeping a house in comparable footage, just the houses in that neighborhood from 1265, 1281, 1296, 1308 Boyd, 1320 Boyd, 1322 Boyd, 1333 Boyd, 1357, and 1369, only one of those houses is at 1,662 square feet. One is at 700 square feet, another one's at 668 square feet, two are at 864 square feet. The others are around 1100 or 1200 square feet. So two houses there would still be larger than what is in that direct area. And we were against two houses last year, and we still feel the same way. We do not feel it's inappropriate for that particular lot there. We feel it would be problematic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Please proceed forward. Seeing that there isn't anyone else, I'm going to close public comment at this time and bring it back to the board table. Mr. Lambert, could you please share with the board and the public written communication on this issue?
I believe we have, if I have counted correctly, two emails or letters that came in, that both are in opposition to the variance.
Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, yes, Mr. Evans?
I do believe we also did receive today a comment from a third resident in the mail, 1265 Boyd, also in opposition.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of the two, I think. I have 1265, and I have 1251.
Oh, then you are correct. My apologies. Yes.
No need to apologize.
Thank you.
Very good. So now, at this point in time, the board, a board member could ask question of city staff, make a comment, or make a motion. And I would, I have a few questions if somebody else is ready. Mr. Sanzika, why don't you go?
Mr. Chair?
Kind of quiet. Yes, Mr. Evans?
I think it's appropriate now that, before you start deliberation, if we need to hear from the applicant, if he wishes to postpone or ask that we proceed...
Oh, sure, yes.
Before you begin deliberation, and also the record should reflect Mr. Eisenbacher's hears, so we're, total of six.
So we do have, Mr. Eisenbacher, Vice Chairman of the Board, has arrived, and so we are a six-member board at this point. Still, we are less than our full complement on other, during other sessions. So if the applicant can address, if he'd like to move forward or ask for a postponement...
No, we can go ahead. There's a few things I wanted to talk about, about the road. I talked to the engineering department on the sidewalk, and there's more than enough setback from the road that's there to put the sidewalk in. I didn't get any written notice. I went in and talked to him, told, showed him what we were going to do, and he told me the setbacks on everything, and we meet all those. The driveways, we always intended to pull the driveways to the center of the lot, so I don't think the driveways would be an issue with anything that's coming out of the driveway.
So if I can just ask you a question, so you're still going to have two driveways, but they would be in the center, would they be separated by any...
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a five-foot setback, so you're going to have 10 feet between the driveways.
Okay.
Unless we do a house on the lot line five foot off, and then flip the driveway over to the other side, then there'd be a big separation. But then you'd have two close driveways with the neighbor.
Okay, the other question I had is, a member of the public made a comment that there weren't renderings like you had a year ago? You had some, I think, some photos?
Well, he had them. He put them back up. I just didn't put them all back up again.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just, you know, the small, they're 16, 17, 100-square-foot ranches. The attached garage is on the front. They're going to have the wide driveways, they're not going to have the narrow driveways like the sub, you know, like they're in the sub now, so.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone else for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Please have a seat.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Sanzika, did you have something?
Well, I just, I guess it was interesting how we, we addressed this last year at this time, it was a tie vote, and because we didn't have a majority vote, it wasn't approved. But, you know, I really don't have a problem with the split, the approval of these variances. I think the lots were plotted this size at the time, that we, the zoning ordinance was changed, and that made it non-conforming use. And I, I really feel that, you know, the majority of the lots in that subdivision would require a variance now if they were to have to rebuild the lot. So I really don't feel it's, it's fair to the applicant to have to not be able to utilize the lots as they were zoned, or as they were plotted. So I don't, I really don't see how that the variances sought makes compliance with the national requirements substantially more difficult, and would be the case for the great majority of the properties in the same zoning district. So I really, in that regard, I really can't justify not approving his zoning request, his variance.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard at this point in time?
Mr. Neill?
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Mr. Evans, regarding Lot 27, which is the land that was taken for the access street for the school.
Yes.
If you could refresh my memory, the setbacks that's required from that side street.
Which it is a driveway, not a street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, is it classified as a driveway?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to bring up the aerial.
I guess what I want to get an understanding is, is what are the requirements? So like when you lay them out, what is the buildable footprint of that lot, which would be 28?
Okay, of 28. Well, they need to maintain at least five feet on any one side and the total of both sides has to be 15. Let me check on the front here.
What I'm really getting at is what kind of buildable footprint is there?
Let's take a look here. What I'm going to do is turn on the dimensions so we can take a look at what the dimensions of that lot is. I'll have to bring it over here just because I can't see it.
I have a drawing of buildable footprints on the split and a non-split, if that'll help.
He's referring to the property next door.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so it does look like Lot 27 is 60 feet wide by the same depth as the lots on either side, which is 120 deep. So it's the same size as the proposed lots here. So your question is regarding, what would the building envelope be, look like?
Yeah, on the lot, on the new lot that would be created, which I think would be number 28.
Oh, the new lot that would be created?
Yeah, you'd have five feet, let's say, on the.
Yeah, say we have five and 10, so it's 60 minus 40, minus 15. So 45 feet in width.
Right.
Plus the depth of the zoning ordinance requires. Let me see what that says. It's going to tell us about front and rear setbacks. So the, so 45 feet wide, it's a 25-foot front setback and a 35-foot rear setback, so that's 60, so 60 deep. So 45 by 60 would be your building envelope.
Okay. And my guess, or my estimate is, considering homes in the neighborhood, that would be, that would allow for a similar type dwelling to be built as to what you see already.
That's 2,700 square feet, just footprint.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that would be very easy to accomplish.
You could build a ranch with a garage and.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment or ask a question?
I have to say, I agree with what Mr. Sanzika said. I mean, the reality is, is from the overview, it looks very clear what the original intention was when they put these lots together and it seems like it would be the original intention of the plating to have multiple properties that, like we've already got in that space. I guess the question is, is as far as justifying it with a statement of practical difficulty, I don't exactly know how that would be done. So I don't have an answer to this. I've got a question. I see what I think should happen as far as the original intention. I don't necessarily know how to get there. Does anybody else have ideas on that?
Maybe the attorney.
Mr. Dufresne?
Please, Chairman Eisenbacher.
A statement of practical difficulty that occurs to me is one we've used several times in the past, which is that the zoning ordinance changed after the plat was established and this plat, as we saw, was very old. So it was platted with small properties. The city has evolved and changed and now there's different setback requirements for general building. This one was set up well before those rules were put in place and that's the difficulty is that it was platted small and now we want big giant setbacks and bigger lots.
Mr. Evans, can you address one question? Because it's been a while since I've been at that property. I'm sure the residents, anybody out here can probably answer that question, but is the driveway from the school to the street, is that one way now?
I don't know if it's one way or not. I could probably give you a rough estimate of the width though, as soon as I, using the aerials, and I'll bring it up to the.
Because even if it's not labeled by the city signage, because it's a driveway.
Right.
Or by the school district, I think it is a one-way in the afternoon off, because clearly it's a very narrow paved area.
I can't read that number. Can you just?
25.
What does that number say?
25.
25, okay. These are, we haven't measured it. These are aerial photographs taken from a plane, but we've found them over the years to be usually within a few feet, one or two, maybe three feet when you measure physical features on the property. So 25 feet, maybe 20 feet wide, but that gives you an idea. A two-way drive aisle, as required by our zoning ordinance for parking lots, has to be 24 feet wide.
It's obviously a concern, especially if children are walking, you know, and if there's two-way traffic and so forth there, but we're not really considering that here. Does a member want to make a comment, question or a motion? Yes, Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yeah, I like that view right there because it shows the current sidewalk ending at the adjacent 1333 property and you can see that the sidewalk is offset from the street. So if that sidewalk is continued to the corner, as is drawn, and then continued back towards the rear of the property, you weren't forcing the kids into the street on rainy or muddy days as the site layout is proposed. There's quite a few houses to the, to the east, plus a whole subdivision addition that potentially kids would be walking to school from.
I would agree, nice new things are nice and new, but how does that deal with the practical difficulty question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Neill?
Question, I'm not sure, maybe it's directed towards you or it could be city staff, but if our rough calculation is correct, that you can have a 2,700 square foot building envelope in which you would not need any other variances to construct and really all we're looking at is approving a split, I'm at a loss to understand what the issue is that brought this before the zoning board and didn't allow a normal tax split. I forget, I apologize for missing the obvious, I guess. Why is it before us, considering you have a buildable envelope, 2,700 square feet? And I could see that if they would require additional variances to build some sort of structure, a usable structure, I would get it, but we don't need it. So why, why is it an issue that we resolve and it's not something back simply as a, or a tax parcel split or directly with planning?
Mr. Evans, could you address that, please?
Yeah, excellent question. What the zoning ordinance says, I'm just going to summarize, is that once a piece of land is configured, in this case, someone decided to combine in the past lots 29 and 28 into one zoning lot, you can't reduce the size of the zoning lot to a size smaller than what the zoning ordinance requires. So if anyone does want a resultant parcel, or in this case, parcels, smaller than what's required, even though there are two existing lots of record, they have to come to this board for a variance, because right now the zoning ordinance recognizes those boundaries that, the square that we see now, that's the existing parcel, as one zoning lot. And one zoning lot doesn't necessarily have to follow the borders of the plat.
Okay, thank you. Another question.
Sure, Mr. Evans.
So with that being the case, now then, maybe this is your expertise here, Ms. Dufresne, is can we approve a quote "variance," even though for a matter which is, I mean, the fact that we're here is bureaucracy, but this is a very bureaucratic rule-based item that's driving this. There's not a practical difficulty with the land, at least that's my opinion. Can we approve a variance to allow for the redevelopment without listing one of the five practical difficulties?
The law is going to require you to find some sort of hardship, practical difficulty. You need to articulate a basis for it and that's to protect the city. That's, I mean, you know, we're looking at either, you know, it could be a potential lawsuit if we don't find a practical hardship.
I guess. It's a catch-22 kind of thing. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
So just to clarify, if this property was 1281 on the other side of the driveway that has not been combined, the parcels were not combined, he wouldn't have to come in to get any kind of approval for construction?
Well, what the zoning ordinance says is a lot, it's called a lot of record, so if you have a lot that's a certain size, we'll say 1281, we're presuming it's just under 7,200 square feet, if the ordinance changes to require a larger lot, you can still build a single-family home on that smaller lot without having to add property, provided you meet setbacks, height, all the other density requirements of the zoning ordinance. So many of these lots that we see here now on this day, this overhead, they could build another house on those lots and not get a variance, even though many of them are close to or similar, the same size as the existing lots that are before you tonight, the proposal.
Mr. Neill, did you have some thoughts?
Not yet. I'm trying to work on something.
Are there any other comments, questions or voices to be heard? Just from a member of the board?
We don't have any information on whether this split was caused by, obviously not the current, but the previous owner? We have, we have no information on that?
I don't know when the parcel was created, so no.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lambert?
To get us off of dead center, I have no idea what my colleagues think on this, but I'm going to move that we deny the variance because of the lack of proof of a practical difficulty that would exist if the lots under the current configuration.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. So what is before the board at this point in time is a denial of the applicant's request? Any discussion?
One thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lambert?
I like the idea of adding the sidewalk, but unfortunately, I don't believe the petitioner has really shown that there's a practical difficulty here, in my opinion, that would allow us to grant the variance. Now, my colleagues may disagree, but in my opinion, I don't see the practical difficulty.
And I would concur with my colleagues' statements in that regard. I'm perplexed as to what a person could point to, to say that this variance, which is an authorization to break the zoning laws, would be warranted with a desire to not build a bigger home, which, you know, some people might buy that bigger home and some residents would say that they hate that idea, but at the end of the day, that's beside the point. We can't consider that here and there is no practical difficulty that I can see.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sanzika?
I've stated what my opinion was before and I think we all have difficulty. This subdivision was platted with smaller lots. Majority of the lots in this subdivision wouldn't meet the ordinance now of the 7,500 square feet and that is a practical difficulty. It was rezoned without consideration of what the existing lots were. And I, and I think that's totally unfair and I can't, I couldn't support a denial of this zoning request, this variance request.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Neill? Yes.
Essentially, I echo Mr. Sanzika's comments and I think we're, I get we're in a trap, essentially, with the way the system is set up, but it ends up to me feeling like we're denying legitimate rights to a landowner to consider that kind of development of the land. I, I just can't find a rationale that allows us to thread the needle, so to speak, to get it, to get it through the regulations that we have to work under with the code. But I do agree with Mr. Sanzika.
And I, I'm completely understanding of both of your perspectives, for sure, but it's kind of like being handed the option of your demise, you know? There's not, maybe not a good option to get there in that scenario, but I think, think to Mr. Neill's comment, which I think were, you know, very insightful, that at the end of the day, it's the code.
Yeah.
And if the code isn't right, there is a methodology for changing that through legal means, you know, by addressing the city council and working with the planning commission and so forth, but we are presented this at this time with this code, so that's why I'll be voting no on this, on this, I'll be voting yes on the motion to reject the applicant's request. Anyone else seen no, that there isn't any other comments? Mr. Evans, I believe, were prepared to, for a vote.
Okay, this is a motion to deny. Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Mr. Neill?
No.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. McCown? Excuse me, Mr. Desmond?
No.
Motion fails. It's back to the board table for consideration of other action.
Mr. Chairman, a question for you.
Mr. Neill?
Ms. Dufresne, can a practical difficulty with the land, I'm just asking for a definition or a little bit of guidance here, can a practical difficulty exist because of, not a characteristic of the land, but a characteristic that exists because of, of the change in zoning codes and other, other features that are more of a public body-making issue? I'm not phrasing it very well, but the issue that's created here exists because of events that have changed in the city code over time, creating this problem. Can that be a basis for a practical difficulty? It's one of our own making, I agree, but is it, is that possible?
I would just remind the board that the, you have five factors that you are to consider. I mean, I'm not sure who articulated it, maybe perhaps it was Chairman Clark, but we're dealing with the ordinance as it is, um, and it, the, we would frown upon taking a conforming lot and making two non-conforming lots, essentially. Um, we're bound by the constraints of our, of our ordinance. I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but...
No, you are, but my next question, I guess, would be, so, I guess it's worthwhile to get this answer so that it's in the record, is if we can't approve it, we have to deny it, let's say another vote comes through and we go in that direction, what is the recourse for the applicant in the city to seek another hearing? Is that through city council only, or is it, do you have to push through a code change? Or what would be the options? I know you could go to court.
Right, right. You have the option to, to go to circuit court.
Is he any options besides that?
He could not petition city council, but he could make the, um, this issue aware to city council, to planning commission, perhaps seek some sort of modification of the ordinance that deals, 'cause I know this issue comes up for this board every so often, where we have lots that, um, you know, planted subdivisions where the ordinance has changed, and this issue comes up, so perhaps there's a way in the, in the zoning ordinance to carve out some sort of exception for these circumstances. Right there, it's just, it's not there in the code.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Evans? Can you just answer a quick question? Because, uh, I'm just curious about this one point, uh, as members, you know, may be perplexed as to what other options are available to this lot, since it is, um, a large lot, would, in this zoning district, is it permissible for a builder to build a, not that it's necessarily amenable to some of the residents, but could like a two-family, two-unit duplex be placed on that parcel?
No, this is a single family.
Single family only, so it's in the size, um, which had been in question in the past, talking about someone could build up to a certain level, does not necessarily have to be the case. They could obviously build something that is more aesthetically an infill property to that, uh, that, that particular subdivision as well. So the concept that this is a Bigfoot, you know, home surrounded by more modest homes isn't necessarily the case, namely, the builder could choose to build something more suited for that, uh, for that neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other members wanting to be recognized at this time? Mr. Neal?
Uh, in light of the information I received from staff, I'd like to make a motion...
Yes.
...to deny the application because a practical hardship has not been identified. I recognize that this motion is essentially similar to what Mr. Lambert made, however, that information to me is significant, so that's why I'm putting the motion forward.
So could you please restate the motion?
The motion would be to deny the application, um, for the, um, to, deny the application to approve this variance. Because the rationale being is that a practical hardship or difficulty with the land has not been established.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's that, Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Lambert seconds. We have a motion before the board. Are there any comments during discussion? Mr. Eisenbacher?
I was just reviewing the, um, the past agendas where we had received a lot of other information, um, when this came up a year ago, over a year ago, and then the historical documents where it came up, I don't know, several, many years ago, with a different owner. One thing that I found interesting is that it says there's 46 non-conforming lots on the street. Does that mean that any of them that would be burned down in a complete loss, if that were to happen, would have to require a permit to rebuild because of the same practical difficulty of square footage, or is rebuild automatic?
Rebuild, as long as they comply with the setbacks, would be automatic, because they would be considered lots of record.
Okay, no, no rezoning needed.
No variances would be needed, that's correct.
Okay.
Would another member like to be recognized? Hearing none, I believe, Mr. Evans, were prepared for a vote?
Okay, and this is a motion to deny. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
No.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Uh, motion fails. You need four votes for a motion to be approved, or resolution to be approved.
I have a question relative to the public safety aspect. Now, as far as the sidewalk going in, that is not internal to this particular parcel, but having that installed would provide an obvious public safety benefit to an intersection that's got children running all over it. Is there a mechanism by which that addition, which isn't actually part of this parcel, affects the, this parcel because of the, the safety that would be created by that sidewalk being added outside of it?
I have not asked our traffic engineering or police department to weigh in on that.
Okay. So there's no official record as to whether or not that would actually be a safety issue or not, is that the...
Right, I don't have an opinion from them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lambert? I'm sorry, Mr. Desmond, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lambert?
Thank you.
In, in light of the petitioner being kind of, uh, having bad luck at coming in front of two meetings within a two-year period where it's been a split board, I want to give him the opportunity to have a full board to consider this case, and I hate to do this to the people who are opposed, because they're gonna have to come back to another meeting, but in the interests of fairness, and so that the, this issue can be decided with a full board, I'd like to move that we postpone action on this item until the next meeting.
So now there is a motion before the board for postponement for, until the month of May? Uh, is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Neal seconds. Is there discussion? Mr. Sanzika?
Didn't this issue come up last time, where we had a tie vote? And if, in a tie vote, if it, if it's not, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the tie vote, the motion, um, I don't know if it fails or is approved, but it, the tie vote, there's an issue, and it, I don't know if it, uh, it'd be...
Right, the last time we took several votes, both motion to pass and motion to, to deny, this, this particular time we've ended on a motion to deny the application, so the motion to deny has failed, so he, it's still a viable application, because the denial has failed.
I see.
Is that making, does that make sense? If it had been a motion to approve that failed, that would be a denial.
I see, okay.
Well, we haven't had a, um, an issue yet on the postponement, uh, resolution until we take a vote here, so that perhaps might sail through to push it into the next month, but it's, it's whatever everybody wants to do here, so I don't have an opinion in that regard. Uh, any other comments on the motion in front of us regarding postponement? Hearing none, Mr. Evans, we're prepared to vote.
Okay, and just to clarify for everybody here, and including the board, the next scheduled meeting is May 17th at 7:30 PM here at this location. Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
So this item will be back before our regular business next month, and people are welcome to come back and address the board on this important issue yet again, or bring other people with them. So at this point in time, we move on to item number five, communications related to the master plan status memo from the planning director, Mr. Evans.
I don't have any additional presentation to make. At the last board meeting, there were a few questions from the board in regards to the status of the master plan, so the director provided this update for you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions on that? So we'll move on to item number six, miscellaneous businesses. Is there any other business before the board this evening, other than trying to check on the Red Wing score? So, we can move on to public comment, item number seven, and if someone would like to address the board, at this point in time, they can come to the podium for public comment, which essentially is like non-agenda items, but you can speak about anything. Any public comment? No. I understand that there isn't, so we'll move on to adjournment. So we will be back in this chamber, uh, next month, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Lambert?
Elections for board chair and vice chairman at the next meeting, or is that in June?
I think it is at the next meeting, we'll verify what we did last month and do the same thing. Last year, I'm sorry.
Seems there isn't anything else, we are adjourned until May. Thank you.